I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the time and place for the July 15th Board Meeting. Welcome to those of you who are joining us in our audience and to those of you who will be watching us on delayed broadcast. Allow me to introduce the individuals at the table with me. From my right, we have Nico Aguirre. Janelle Carter. Mike Miller. Close enough?
Yeah, it was good.
Okay. Karina Hernandez from my left. Sean Heitman and Ben Fletcher. At the center table with me, we have, to my right, Paulette Newbold, the Board Secretary, and to my left is Dr. Theron Shuji, the Superintendent of Schools, and I'm the Niblock. We have a pink sheet on the speakers' table for you. If you're here to address the Board, please be sure and sign in. You will be given five minutes to speak at the end of the consent agenda, and please remember that the Board cannot respond to your comments according to Board policy. Please read with me the Marshalltown Community School District mission.
We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
And stand as you're able and join the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are. We have a number of personnel changes that took place over the course of the last two days, so we're going to have Dr. Ryan come forward and share with you those changes.
Pick a microphone. It works. This one? No? There you go. All right, good evening. There have been, like Dr. Shuji said, there have been several changes here in the last few days, even the last hour, so I apologize, but the document there that is in the Agenda Item details was, like I said, just updated, so I'm going to go over what's highlighted in yellow. These are the very, very new additions. So if you take a look at resignations, 20 and 21, we have Katie Trofsky, who resigned as the PLC lead at Anson Elementary for kindergarten class, and then also Stacy Sorensen as musical production assistant at the high school. So these are brand-new additions. If you continue to the next page for appointments, number seven is highlighted in yellow. Jennifer Doobin, pending conditional license and/or her endorsement, will be the preschool teacher at Franklin, and she's replacing Anna Wood. The following page, number 15, another appointment. Christina McKibbin, replacing David Melody. Apologize if I mispronounce these names. Special ed teacher at Level 2 at the high school, again, pending a license or endorsements. And then 31 through 34 are all new appointments. Really briefly, Elise Brethauer, replacing Katie Trofsky as kindergarten teacher at Anson. Mallory Kern, replacing Jenny Laithoff, the first grade PLC lead. This is just the PLC lead position. Claire Wing, fourth grade PLC lead at Holgland, replacing Lacy Moore. And then Andrew Schaefer, replacing Tiffany Bridgewater as eighth grade science teacher at the middle school. Couple more yearbooks. The very last page for change of contract, we have those three. So Jenny Laithoff will be half second grade PLC lead at Holgland, and Tamara Murphy, half second grade PLC lead at Holgland, so they'll be splitting that role. And then the final, Marquellen Allensworth, as ELL teacher at Rogers Elementary School, coming from the fifth grade at Lenahan. So those are just what we wanted to verbally add or bring your attention to, so those were.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Carter, Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0. Haven't had a 7-0 for a long time. No recognitions, Mr. Carter. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the 17th? The minutes of July 2nd? You heard from Dr. Ryan about personnel items. Are there any other items of note? Looking at interagency agreements and contracts, we have an agreement with Mid-Iowa Community Action for Bobcat University Programming, so Karina will abstain from this vote. Contract for scholarship services with Iowa River Valley Early Childhood, counseling service contract with Gracie May Advocates Center. Is that Gracie?
Grace C. May.
An advertising agreement with Marshalltown Newspaper. Grant approval in the amount of $31,152 from the Iowa Department of Education. A contract with the Iowa Department of Public Health to execute the personal responsibility education program. We have special education enrollments. Looking at 34 special education students out, two to West and 32 to East, Marshall. In open enrollments, we have six out and three in. Any items of noted bills? Any questions from Board members? Looking at donations, we have $29.30 donation from Alliant Energy Foundation for Modular Tech, $307.50 donation from KFJP-KXIA for Modular Tech, $1,268 from Structural Engineers PC for Modular Tech, and $184 value for in-kind donation from Alliant Energy from the installation of the Woodbury bike wall. Are we going to get one at Great Con to?
Yes.
Yours ended up pretty much similar to Woodbury's Benson hat.
Oh.
And a contribution from Martha Ellen Ty in the amount of $50,000. That's our annual contribution. There is a financial report. Any questions for Paulette on that? We're looking at approving the obsolete equipment, which was attached, the list, as obsolete. Have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So. Second.
Miller Aguirre, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention?
Abstention?
Nobody on the sheet?
No one on the sheet.
Moving right on to Jamie Stensland. Would you please join us at the speaker table?
Thank you. Okay. I spend most of my day in my car driving to school, so I'm happy to stand tonight, but appreciate the chance to be here. My name is Jamie Stensland, and I'm here to thank the district for its support of the American Heart Association and to acknowledge the teachers, specifically the elementary and intermediate teachers at your schools who participate every year in the American Heart Association programs. In the past, for 40 years, they were called Jump Rope for Heart. This past year, we changed it to Kids' Heart Challenge to be more encompassing and more relevant to the topics that the schools are facing today. So not only are we addressing physical health, but we're also addressing the social-emotional piece of that, too. We're talking to kids about being kind, we're talking to them about doing good deeds, and we're mostly talking to them still about taking care of their hearts, because we know that this generation of kids is going to live five years less than we are, and that's pretty scary with the statistics that we're seeing. So it's important that we are reinforcing the messages that your teachers are communicating on a daily basis, and we're just here to reinforce that. Your teachers here are outstanding to work with. I have enjoyed working with every one of your elementary PE teachers, who I mostly work with at your schools, and the intermediate teacher as well. Hoping that we can extend our programming to the middle school and high school levels, where we are starting to address vaping and bullying with students at those age levels, because we have teachers and principals saying, "We need help addressing this. We can't do it by ourselves anymore." I'm happy to share with you, and you may already know, but one of your elementary's, Rogers, with Nikki Bolivar being the PE teacher there, she received a grant in the amount of $2,000 for a project that she has, and I emailed her asking her what that project is, but she didn't get back to me. So I'm unaware of what she requested in that grant, but Rogers was the only school in Iowa to receive one of our grants this year, and it's a new grant program that we're going to continue to offer to schools across the country, and I was so excited that one of my schools was a recipient. But just again, want to say thank you for the support that this district gives to the American Heart Association. We're here to be a resource for you. We're here to help your students and help your district to be a success. So are there any questions that I can address tonight? Okay, that's all. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we've provided, again, for the Board to review both the priorities that we've established essentially in the past two years, because I think we've for the most part sustained our priorities from two years ago, and not much had changed with the Iowa Legislature, and then also the plethora of possible platform positions that IASB provides in a variety of arenas. Really, the only thing that has changed, and it was a big one, was that SAVE became reauthorized, so there would not be a need to retain that particular item as a result of recent passage of the rule of SAVE. I believe the other four items are still relevant, but that's not to say that you may have some ideas for other things that maybe should be brought to the forefront. The school calendar item, which is probably the lower-hanging fruit of the four remaining, is probably the most timely right now, because this year, we're kind of feeling the effects of the way the calendar rolls annually and the fact that the 23rd lands on a Friday. So my guess is not many, if any, schools are going to have their first day of... Students start on Friday of the 23rd, so consequently, they're going to roll it to Monday of the 26th. And so I think there still is meaning in, and maybe more so than in recent years past, to keep that item on there, because people will better understand some of the complications with going with the set date versus saying the school could start first weekday immediately following the conclusion of the State Fair, which was at least the initial intent of that legislation. But I would open it up, if there was any other comments regarding other issues for us to consider, or if you're comfortable with sticking with the remaining four platform items, priorities. I think we can only register like three or four anyway.
I think so.
Yeah, we've always set our five, and they only, online, they only really accept, I think it's three or four. Or if you would like, me, Janelle, and I as Board Leadership to talk in conjunction with our next agenda planning meeting and try to firm up those priorities to bring before you, we can do it that way as well.
I have a note in IASB, the 16, first 16 pages are listings of everything that was talked about at the legislative meeting that I attended, but on pages 17 and 18, they have listed their priorities, and those will be the ones that IASB will be using their lobbying power to address during this coming school year.
Yeah, so from each of those benefits, all school boards are asked to submit, you know, associational school boards, their district's priorities, and then from that, they put forth, I think, a platform that's been discussed and debated at the Delegate Assembly that's part of the annual convention in November and be as served as our, as admirably served as our representative at ASB.
Nobody else will do it. So we're really looking for somebody to do that this year.
And then we also generally in November, December, ask our state legislators who represent this area to attend a board meeting, and we'll use that as a means of sharing with them what our district board priorities are, or have some general discussion on what they see through the coming session.
So if their priorities necessarily might not match our district's?
Correct, because they will take into account all 300.
Because the only, the only commonality I see is SAVE. What we have listed as our priority than what their, potentially in the board, is their priority list, so.
This is last year's, right?
Yeah. No, this is for 2019.
No, this is for the next year. Yeah. Yeah, I think early literacy tends to be a pretty common resounding theme across districts. School calendar, maybe not as much these days. Dropout at risk, they have made some adjustments in flexibility in years past, but they haven't really increased funding per se. That's a huge priority for our district. English learners is a huge priority for our district, and over the years, they've made some adjustments, and actually, I think, came very close to making another adjustment that would have benefited our district quite a bit, so I think that definitely is worth keeping on the radar there. The unfunded mandate was really unfunded or underfunded was our board's, really a product of our board really feeling strongly about it, because prior to the most recent two administrations, there was a lot of concern likely about unfunded mandates, although there was a mechanism for which, when that happened, the school districts could recover those funds, and in the recent past, I think there's been an effort, although not 100%, to not push forward unfunded mandates, but there's been a lot of underfunded mandates and a lot of high recommendations and/or legislation passed with, you know, minimal dollars behind it. So I think that's, personally, I think that's very much worth keeping on there as well.
So when they added in the financial literacy as part of graduation, but there wasn't any funding behind that, that would kind of fall under that, correct?
Yeah, they did it to us anyway.
Yeah, that was kind of a...
Still got to voice ourselves.
That was a supplant versus supplement type of deal.
That was a topic when our legislative... The only thing that I saw on the IASB list that wasn't on our list, I was surprised it wasn't on our list, is the early setting of state supplemental aid rates, because not in the most recent budget year, but in the last budget year, they set that rate very, very late, and the pressure on us setting our budget. So I think that's of great importance to our district. Now, it was like their number 2-1 on their list, so it's probably covered, but this is certainly something that impacts us a lot.
Yeah, and I think that, I think maybe my first year here, I'd have to double-check, but we used to have something on there that talked about adequate school funding, including funding on a timely basis, and ever since they discontinued, which has now been eight years or so, they used to approve two-years budget, you know, a year ahead of time, so you could plan accordingly. Now it's on, you know, it's that, they, the spring, this past spring, they determined the amount of additional funding that we would receive for this next budget year, which really puts a lot of pressure on like the negotiation processes, because no one wants to sit down at the table until they know what kind of dollars the district has in terms of new money and that sort of thing, so. And consequently, that then dominoes into contracts being offered late, which can be problematic for employees as well as the district and that sort of thing. So I think we certainly could take a look and bring back that whole concept of adequate and on-time funding, and that would be universal for all districts. There is a, it's kind of a, I'm the bus school funding one they got in here. I think it includes that, but it also includes something to talk about quite a bit, which is reflects actual costs for special education services. And we talk about it every time the deficit comes up, and talk about how it's an issue for everybody in the state.
I think that one might be one to consider.
Part of the challenge with the special aid deficit is the fact that the federal government doesn't fully fund their obligation, which, you know, creates problems in there.
I guess I'd be open to, to have a, a scale review of...
So would you like for us to bring back at the first August meeting, a draft of the comments that you made and see if it meets with your approval?
Sure, that's fine. You know, having you, Janelle, is about a great deal.
If you have other ideas that should be considered, this should be in.
Sure.
Tonight I have two topics to discuss. The first being the Chromebook case purchase for Miller students this year on the April 15th and June 17th Board Meetings. We discussed the Chromebook purchase this year, and this is a continuation of that discussion for the actual cases. The cases typically come in a little bit late, because we're ordering new Chromebooks, and the cases have to be designed and manufactured, and so we have bids in, is my recommendation, to award SHI the bid for 440 Chromebook cases for the approximate amount of $11,000. I have here the actual case that we're hoping to receive. It's a form-fitting case, it has nice protection on the bumpers. We have definitely noticed as a tech department that providing these cases to Miller students has reduced the amount of damage that has been done to the Chromebooks, so it's a pretty durable case, so I can take a good beating, so. Very similar to the case that we purchased last year as well.
It's not made of kryptonite or anything?
Not made of kryptonite, no, not like that, but...
Let's drop it and see how low it is.
I'd be all right.
If we add the 56 cents, can we remove the word "approximate"?
Yes.
We've never approved an approximate amount. We have always approved an exact amount or up to a certain amount, so you tell me what you think.
That is the exact amount that they submitted.
11,439.56?
Correct.
Let's take these separately. May I have a motion to award SHI the bid for 440 Chromebook cases in the amount of $11,439.56?
So moved.
Same. Carter Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0.
The second topic that I'd like to discuss is a continuation of a May 20th Board Meeting, where we discussed the technology replacement cycle. Specific to this would be the projector replacement. At that meeting, I requested to publish an RFP for 228 projectors and 280 ceiling mount kits. We've received bids back, and it is my recommendation to award Tierney Brothers of St. Paul, Minnesota, the bid totaling $160,318.70 for 228 Epson projectors and 280 ceiling mounts. These projectors and kits will be used to replace a good portion of the projectors in the entire district, so this will be covering all buildings, and that should say exact, not approximately on that.
Questions for Josh?
Projector's still a way to go, as opposed to like TVs.
I had discussions with the curriculum department and the length about the projectors and the amount that would fit in our budget for this. At this time, there was not the desire to get like an interactive whiteboard or a television. The projector cost is still relatively low when you're comparing it to TVs, and also a lot of our classrooms are wired in currently four projectors. If we were to switch to television, it would increase the cost significantly to rerun wiring and add electrical outlets and the appropriate mounting hardware for the televisions.
May I have a motion to award Tierney Brothers the bid for 228 Epson projectors and 280 ceiling mounts for $160,318.70?
So moved.
Same.
Carter Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
And now on to our favorite topic of the evening, and we'll look at the time. Wow. Okay.
As far as the first readings of Board Policy, there have been no further changes to any of these policies since our last board meeting in June. All of these policies, recommendations for change were in consultation with Director of Finance Newbold as related to shoring up these policies or bringing more clarity to them as related to things such as limits and stuff. If you want me to walk through the changes again, will be?
Are there any questions for Board members? This is the second time you've seen these, but... We're going to do this in a felt suit. May I have a motion to approve and amend 401.7, 401.10, 401.12, 401.12R, and 705.9? Can wait this second reading.
Move forward.
Miller Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven, zero. Now may I have a motion to adopt seven eleven six, which is now seven eleven nine, seven oh five four, seven oh five point four R one, seven oh seven point five, and seven oh seven point five R one?
A seven eleven new, seven eleven nine is not a new policy.
It's a new...
It's a new number, it's a current policy that's being amended.
Okay. Then we'll need to go back to that one. So delete that one from the motion of adopting five four, five four R one, seven five, and seven five R one.
So moved.
Heitman Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, my error, we're going back to seven eleven point nine and amending seven oh, seven eleven point nine. May I have a motion to do so, and wait the second reading?
So moved.
Same.
Was that Heitman Fletcher? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven, zero.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Mike, are you comfortable talking about these, or you want me to watch them?
No, I can talk about mine. Mine, mine are a subset of all these that you want me to talk about, but I, of course, I need you. Okay. Policy one hundred, district mission, it's going to have to come back as a first reading. We've changed a lot of language here to be consistent with IASB policy. Still think we have some goals on here that are real old, too, so we changed some of those out.
Any questions for Mike at this time?
So the mission vision, particularly with the, this philosophy thing, that much IASB is...
The first four paragraphs, yeah, the district philosophy is from the IASB, and then our current mission order interjected, and then we stuck with these. We didn't really create new beliefs statements. These are fairly universal and still applicable, I believe.
Okay.
Back to the, yes, okay. Policy one hundred dash E one, recommend that we delete this policy. It's a bunch of really old data that doesn't really belong in board policy. I think Faren wants to share this kind of information at the PSYAC meetings, but not in board policy. So I guess we can bring this back to the next meeting to approve the deletion of this particular policy.
Yeah, this, this is the same data that's been shared out in PSYAC and or, you know, the board data presentations, so it should be shared out with the board certifier at the board table, but not our policy. Otherwise, we'd be changing this out every year.
Are we deleting E two as well? And then one hundred E two?
So one hundred E two, I think we are renaming...
One hundred E one?
One, we're re...
Yes.
Renaming to one hundred, renumbering to one hundred E one, and renaming it from strategies to strategic goals. And there's a bunch of changes that we have here that are made consistent with our current strategic plan, so that would also have to come back for approval.
Okay. Then one hundred E two is actually our one-page strategic plan that would be provided as an example, so that would be new, so that one needs to come back as well.
And the only other one I was assigned was one hundred E three, which isn't on this list, because Faren, you said you wanted to have that table for a bit.
Yeah, and that was a calendar of the data presentations related to the policy, which I think is valuable, we just need to really retool that. Two oh two point two, which will become the new two oh six point one, recommend, that's on the board president's policy, recommending that we mark that as reviewed. The only change would be striking vice president from that policy title, because it speaks primarily to presidency. There's a new policy for vice president.
Agreed?
Two point oh two point five, board of directors, conflict of interest, these are legal changes relative, that were just recently passed by the legislature, increasing the amount of business that the board member in their private business could conduct without being considered a conflict of interest, that would need to come back. Two oh six point two outlines the specific duties of the vice president of the board, that is a new policy that would come back. Three oh seven, communication channels simply had some code and reference changes, so I would recommend that be marked as reviewed.
Okay, on the board? Okay.
The attendance center assignment had some changes relative to recent legislation as it relates to siblings, trying to best ensure that siblings don't get split up between different schools whenever ever possible, so that will need to come back. Five oh, five point five, graduation requirements has some further adjustments and corrections on it. The biggest reason it's coming back to you is because there was a purposeful statement or change made related to students with IEP, so that will need to come back, what the expectations are for graduation here. And then six oh three point one, we needed to make some adjustments on, due to the new financial literacy requirement, although while reviewing this, we realized we had made appropriate adjustments. Graduation requirement one, we had just used IASB boilerplate, which did not match up our number of credits that we require, so there were more changes on here related to making sure that the, the specific subject areas as it relates to graduation and the credits that need to be accrued to graduate reflect what was in our graduation policy. That will need to come back.
So we have nine policies coming back. Would encourage you to give it your perusal, so that we can move through those quickly after.
Dr. Shu, there's a typo on five oh five point five.
Okay.
Right after the highlighted word include towards the bottom, it looks like being in accordance with does not strike or struck. Will include the prescribed courses studied. All right, thanks. We'll correct that for the next one.
Any other questions, comments?
The oftentimes, especially in this month, they'll be, we get periodic policy primaries from IASB relative to changes and adjustments that they recommend throughout the year, but we always get quite a few this time of year as a result of the legislative changes, so that's why there are a number of extra ones on this, this month.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah. Since we have some time to fill. Okay, okay. Well, online school registration started last Monday, and we have some help days for those who need assistance on Wednesday and Thursday this week, from eleven AM to seven PM, at the Miller Middle School gym, for those who need assistance with online school registration. But everything's going pretty well. I usually hear if it doesn't, so I think Josh, you heard good things?
Yeah.
So I think it's going pretty well so far for our second year of online school registration.
Yeah, super good.
David Stanfield is a big, big one to thank for that, but...
Very convenient, real fascinating, he's a good job.
Yeah, David is, he deserves a kudos, because he does an awesome job with that. So, so yeah, so a lot of help this week, and I'm sure Faren will be talking about what there may come up on Friday here.
You can talk about it.
Oh, well, you're more of the, in tune with everything, but our playground build is this Friday, we're looking forward to that, and the heat will definitely, definitely throws a curveball, but we're, we're close to what we needed for volunteers, I think we're close to the two hundred range, and...
Yeah, we had as of Friday, a hundred and sixty-five registered volunteers, are, we are shooting for two hundred, so we're still pretty optimistic that we'll have some student athletes and others that will show up Friday and register on site, but everyone's pretty excited for the build. A lot of thirty volunteers out there Wednesday unloading the truck into a storage container and making sure all the tools are where they need to be and this and that. Thursday will be somewhat the same with about fifteen volunteers, unless we get everything done on Wednesday, and then the big day will be on Friday. We'll have KFJ being kicked out there, broadcasting, playing music as well as doing live broadcast feeds throughout the day with representatives of Dr. Care, Dr. Pepper, Fairway, Kaboo, the district, and Mayor Brewer's planning on stopping out, so it should be a great day.
If a group wants to volunteer, but they can't stay the whole time, the whole eight to two, is that okay? To have a group volunteer and go for what they can go for?
The, the recommendation, because I asked that question early on, was they really like to have the volunteers, if at all possible, stay for the day, however, I don't think anyone will be turned away, because the more we have, the sooner we'll get done. And with the heat that is anticipated this week, the sooner is better. And they can just, they can just register on...
Bring a crowd, check in at eight.
And they can just register on, on site. When they arrive, we'll have people at a registration desk there.
This reminds me of when we painted the bridge in Center Street years ago, they had so many volunteers, they had the whole thing done in about thirty minutes.
I'd be thrilled if we could pull that off, but there's a lot of moving parts to this.
It's advertised on channel thirteen.
Yeah, we have reading some more being covered in a way as well, so lots of, lots of attention to this, it should be a fun day, so.
Yeah, I want to thank Andrew for his efforts, Chuck Springer's been really highly engaged in this work, Jared Whedon, then we've got a number of staff members who've stepped up to be all team leaders for the project, as well as were part of the planning committee, which has been conference calling for an hour or more every week for about the past two months, getting ready for this, so it's been quite an orchestration. Bia told me early on that these, these are a lot of work, I believe.
Looking ahead at reminders, our next school board meeting is August fifth, same time, same place. We have a work session from five to seven for superintendent goals and board goals on July twenty-third. Karina gets the next shot at board policies. Any committees that have met that I don't know about? What have we done this evening to improve the education for students in the district?
Improved the hiring of a lot of people.
Lot of people, lot of people.
New projectors.
And an opportunity for board students to not break their Chromebook.
I think the online registration, being on its board for four years now, that's been a goal and a hope for a long time, and it seems like it's finally, well, in last year's time. Thanks to the IEP department and all that.
This is, I believe, the third district that have gone through that transition with, and it's always a bit of a rocky road in the year one, and then there's a lot of things to learn, there's, you know, depending on the system you use and that sort of thing, but we're cautiously optimistic. It's great to hear, as we have from Mike and a few others, that the online pieces work so well, hopefully the same will be said for those that come in and get assistance on Wednesday and Thursday.
Has anybody been checking for updates of the parties in any moment? The registration, online registration.
Oh, as far as numbers go, I haven't received any numbers, though.
Yeah, I know that Corinne, or I'm sorry, Stacy, our registrar, is really pleased with the numbers, I can't remember exactly, but as of Friday, she said it was significantly more than she expected at that time, so really optimistic there.
Another new thing that's happening this year is that the free and easy applications are also online, so they can fill those out as they go through that process, and that's started, those started coming in the very first day, so that was thrilling, that those were already being added and pushed through, so.
Well, before I give you my quote, which is really, really short. We have two new people with us. We have Dr. Nora with us, we have Nico with us, and I think that I would ask each of you, and I'll start to give you some time to think, share one thing that those two people don't know about you. Not that everybody doesn't know, because that could get difficult, but just something that Dr. Nora and Nico probably don't know. And mine is that I was a principal for twenty-five years before I came on the board, and seventeen of those twenty-five were here in Marshalltown.
Well, I don't know, I spent a lot of time with Nora, so I don't know. Oh, gosh, that's hard. I have four grown children.
Oh, you're too young. Anybody else ready?
When I was in college, I worked in Toy Story.
In where?
A toy store.
But not Toy Story?
No, not, not in the film Toy Story. Animated film, I was not part of that.
Okay. I'm fluent Swedish, which is useless, but...
But it's really cool. I'll say I have, I've taken guitar lessons now for five years, and I would have hoped to have been better than truly mediocre, but that's all the better that I am.
I thought five years got you going out on tour.
You think?
Well, my, I was raised with a school in Fort Gosh, so most privately, in my experience, I would compete against Bobcats.
And you lost a lot then, didn't you?
It was way out to here, we're the fourth holiday for my family, it's strange seeing Bobcat do it all, but... I'll get a little bit.
I was the sports editor of the high school paper when I tended here. In fact, my teacher, who now is long retired and lives in Wisconsin, sent me a picture from back in those days that I didn't even know existed today, so...
Back row? Go ahead.
So, oftentimes, I get asked to go to schools and read or do junior achievements, and I often conclude it with a juggling show, so I'm good at juggling, but not just regular balls. I'll have the kids get random items from the classroom, and I can juggle like staplers, and so that is really impressive.
You just throw stuff at each other?
Yeah, yeah, and some, one kid, are you gonna juggle us? Yeah, so, no, I just...
Before becoming in education, I spent six years as a therapist, so...
In therapy?
You've been done.
We can't hear you guys back there, so...
Before being in education, I spent six years as a therapist, so, you know, my office is set up for all the right things. We do have food, we do have drink, we do have a place that you can hide in a corner and rock underneath a desk if you need to.
I'm the oldest of six, so, I'm from a large family.
He likes being a man of mystery over there.
Rock climber, I play guitar as well, so...
Beyond mediocrity?
I think, I'd like to consider beyond mediocrity, but I'll have to jump, like, sometime and see what happens, so...
That's good for Andrew, you know, for our beginning of the year.
Okay, a sort of karate show, yeah.
I like to make balloon animals so we can take our show on the road.
I will sing at weddings and funerals, so I can show my vocals.
I don't have nothing but that.
Well, anything. What?
I've been affiliated with the district as far as a parent. I worked and working for Micah as a partner for twenty years now.
That's interesting.
Nico, you want to add something for us?
Um...
There's lots we don't know about you, so you're pretty...
We all know you a lot, number eight.
Love. Oh.
We voted for you anyway.
I'm talking about the interview.
I was almost a deal breaker. We shouldn't do it. I really enjoy playing basketball. I rarely do, and for being short and chunky, I'm not terrible. Well, it's all relative.
Well, my quote for this evening comes from Sam Keen. He is an American author and a professor at Harvard and Harvard Divinity School. It's really short, but with the heat this week and over the weekend, it really means something for me. Deep summer is when laziness finds respectability. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Soon.
Did you... Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We are adjourned.